Evening, this is a call to order for the Bridgeport Board of Education regular meeting. Today is Monday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the time is now six thirty-four P. M. We'll start with our pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call, please?
Sahiba Bain.
Present.
Christine Baptiste Perez.
Present.
Albert Benahan. Lakeisha Casimir.
Present.
Willie Medina.
Present.
Jennifer Perez is here. Joseph Sokolovick.
Present.
Robert Traber. Andre Woodson. Albert Benahan. All right.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Student representative reports. Are there any student representatives here tonight that would like to give a report? Student representatives online or in person? Student representatives? Okay. Oh, okay. Come on up to the stand.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Adian Lachman, and I am here today to represent Harding High School. Throughout the two thousand and four, two thousand and four, two thousand and twenty-five school year, we have lots to highlight. First, I would like to speak about this year's HOSA chapter, a club part of our medical careers magnet. We have doubled our membership members since last, compared to last year's HOSA chapter, increasing diversity. We are, we went from thirty-four in the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four school year to sixty-eight. I'd like to talk about the school events that we have completed. In September, Harding High School's Medical Magnet has focused on spreading awareness toward pediatric cancer in September. Our Medical Magnet students dedicated that month to raising money toward donations to St. Jude Medical Center to fund research for cancer and pediatrics. Our HOSA leadership has also executed an event that time dedicated to pediatric cancer called Harding's Lemonade Stand. This was to, as tribute to Alex's Lemonade Stand, which is a nonprofit organization, also sending money to St. Jude's for research. In October, we had, Student Council had their Fall Fest event. That is an event where students just come together, have play games, and enjoy themselves. With that, HOSA also, HOSA and the Medical Magnet had a Pinkout Day, which is also to represent breast cancer awareness. Our Medical Magnet students also participated in the annual Breast Cancer Awareness Walk in Sherwood Island Park and raised money towards donations to the American Cancer Society. For November, Harding High School seniors had a senior breakfast in which, for the first period, seniors were served breakfast with hash browns, pancakes, sausage, eggs, and bacon. The time was also used for seniors to engage with one another and share quality time. HOSA and the Medical Magnet have focused on epilepsy awareness, and our students wore purple to represent this month's awareness on November fifteenth, Friday. Friday, November twenty-second, HOSA members compiled multiple dishes from their culture to host a Friendsgiving luncheon among each other. Our HOSA members had a great time together, sharing a quote-unquote Thanksgiving dinner with each other. As for the Student Council, we are currently in our Spirit Week, which we have currently had Twin Day, Throwback Thursday, Character Day, and Culture Day today. Tomorrow, we are having our Color Wars and Pep Rally. Regarding school participation in these events, many students have been attending and having a fantastic time. We encourage you guys to please check out the Harding High School Instagram page for pictures featuring these events. Harding seniors have also been receiving college visits from various colleges around Connecticut, along with FAFSA Fridays, during which, for the past two Fridays, seniors have received assistance completing the FAFSA. This is crucial as the FAFSA has just opened recently. Students have also been delighted to hear that they are also receiving scholarships and grants this early on. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Samantha Montez. I am the representative for Harding High School. So we have received feedback from many of our students regarding the bus passes at our school. There was a time during COVID, two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty, that the bus fare was free for all, which helped many of our students that dealt with financial issues. However, in order for a student to receive a bus pass, they must be at least in two miles or more radius from our school. Many of our students live in a one mile or and a half radius from school and don't receive a bus pass. Most need a ride from school, either from their friends or from their parents, or they need to make that forty-five-minute walk from school to be on time in all kinds of waters, whether it's raining, snowing, or humid outside. In the same weather, students here walk into school knowing that there's a possibility for their supplies being damaged, such as the school computer, which does cost a lot of money, like hundreds of dollars, to replace the damages that many students can't afford. Another issue is safety concerns. For many students, they walk alone early in the morning and after sunset. Students that don't have the bus passes aren't guaranteed a safety way back home with, from like the forty-five-minute walk. We want to propose an idea for the students of Bridgeport, more towards Harding, to show their student IDs and to be able to ride the bus fare for free, instead of using the bus pay, like the bus pass slash monthly sticker as proof of being able to ride the fare for free. Some cancellations that occurred is, unfortunately, Medical Magnet planned a blood drive for all students of Harding to participate and to donate their bloods to the patients for their use. Sadly, due to the temperature regulation issues, the American Red Cross deemed that the criteria to donate and store blood among with maintaining student safety were not meant. So based on the effects on the blood storage and the health of students, it is important for the school to regulate their temperature to be able to store the blood and to ensure student safety afterwards. Thank you very much for listening to our success and concerns, and also don't forget to visit our Harding Instagram page. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other student representatives? Thank you again. The next item on the agenda is public comment. I just wanted to let the board know that we have eighteen people signed up for public comments, so I just wanted to know, would this be the time? Does somebody want to, Mr. Sokolovick?
I make, I make a motion to suspend the rules and allow for every speaker to speak.
Okay, the motion was made by Mr. Sokolovick, seconded by Mr. Traber to extend public comment to recognize all eighteen people. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. We'll recognize that Mr. Albert Benahan has, has come into the meeting. Mr. Traber, did you want to say something? I thought I heard somebody. Okay. Yes, I did. Thank you. Two minutes may be allotted to each speaker. Up to fifteen speakers today. It'll be eighteen speakers for a maximum of thirty minutes. The board may modify these limitations at the beginning of a meeting if the number of persons wishing to speak makes it available to do so. A Board of Education member or official shall be appointed by the chairperson prior to the meeting to act as the timekeeper. We got that. No boisterous conduct shall be permitted at any Board of Education meeting. Persistence and boisterous or inappropriate conduct shall be grounds for summary termination by the chairperson or that person's privilege of address. All speakers must identify themselves by name and address. Only Bridgeport resident, individuals, or organizations, district employees, district students, or parents, guardians of district students shall be permitted to address the board through public address. Such individuals wishing to address the board shall register to do so no later than six thirty P. M. on the day of the meeting where public address is offered. Registering shall consist of providing the participant's name, the qualifications to address the board, and the participant's topic of interest to address the board. Just wanted to, to read that off. So our first name on the list is Willie Cora.
Board members, my name is Willie Cora, a longtime Bridgeport resident here. I am a grandfather of four grandkids that attend Bridgeport Public Schools, and I'm here on behalf to speak about the middle school basketball program. Three years ago, Bridgeport Caribe had the pleasure and the honor to run the middle school basketball program. And to this day, it has been one of my best tasks I have had as a director of sports. Kids are engaged, principal reports from kids, teachers' reports from kids, students, and also from coaches, how sports, as you already know, change a child's life. The middle school basketball program, last three years, we have kids' grades improvement, behavioral improvements, and also health improvement throughout the basketball program. There are seven hundred-plus kids in the basketball and cheerleading programs. There's twenty schools, forty-one teams total. There's fourteen cheerleading squads that every Saturday represent their schools, proudly represent their schools. I can't even tell you the amount of guests we have at all three high schools that come in and positively encourage these kids in this basketball program. This is a middle school basketball program. Bridgeport Caribe has the honor to hold these, these basketball programs along with other clinics that we hold. And I say other clinics is because we have a program called Girls on the Move, Bridgeport Caribe privately funded. And every quarter, we have, for free, a hundred and twenty-plus girls from high school, sixth through eighth grade, and third and fifth grade attend these basketball clinics for the middle school students. And also, it's not only basketball, it's a girl enrichment program and self-esteem. So I ask that you please consider and vote in on having this basketball program returned. And I thank you very much, board members. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Steve Cassidy.
Bridgeport Board of Education members, happy Report Conference Night. My name is Steve Cassidy, a Bridgeport Public Schools parent, past school administrator, and past middle school basketball coach. I am here to express my strong support for the Bridgeport Middle School Basketball Program. In my multiple roles, I have seen firsthand the great impact this program has had for so many years. Middle school basketball existed long before COVID and has been an awesome way for Bridgeport kids to be part of a team. For many of our kids, especially females and new arrivals, it is their first chance to play an organized sport. Where transportation or finances may be a hindrance to them in joining an out-of-school league, this opportunity literally meets them where they are. In a time when this country and its young people are facing an epidemic of loneliness, this experience serves to provide important emotional ties to peers and trusted adults. This wonderful experience also benefits our families. The Saturday games, our family affairs look forward to by awe. Students and their families develop deeper connections to their schools. Parents were deeply upset when they found out the program had been put on hold. Support from this program and our community is vast. This was highlighted by an online petition that started Friday and has built more than four hundred signatures, four twenty-five at last count. In the grand scheme of things, this program is a small cost with a big benefit for those that matter most. It is a pre-COVID program that would be funded with appropriate Title IV grant funds, Title IV grant funds. I have confidence you, as board members, will do the right thing to make sure this unbelievably positive experience happens for hundreds of our city's children.
All right, Mr. Cassidy, please wrap up your comment.
And I look forward to seeing all of you at our city's gyms this winter. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sophia B.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. My name is Sophia. I am the captain of the JV squad for Caribe, and I've been on the team for two years now. Caribe is not just a program where kids just play sports, but we are all, but we are a family. All of our coaches truly care for us. The cheerleading program has taught me how to be trusting, how to be a trusting person, and how to rely on my teammates. Not only do I speak for my team, I speak for the Caribe program and my fellow sister squads. This program has taught me so much about friendship and about being in a community, and that community is just amazing in all of it, everything it does. It just helps students learn and makes their creativity flow.
I just want to recognize that Chair Christine Baptiste Perez has joined online. Our next speaker is Emily Rodriguez.
So my name is Kashina Aboney. I'm next on the list. We're just going to talk together, if that's fine. My name is Kashina Aboney. I am currently the cheer coach at Central High School and decided to return to Classical Studies Magnet Academy Cheer Program. Cutting the funding to this program would do a disservice. In two thousand and seventeen, Emily Rodriguez, in this picture, joined the middle school team that year. I was brave, and Emily made the team as a third-grade student and kept up with all her older teammates. Emily is a junior at Fairchild Wheeler and will explain how the cheer program at CSMA has positively impacted her life.
I started cheering in third grade, thinking I just wanted to try something out for fun. But throughout the years, I enjoyed cheering for the boys and girls basketball team. I made new friendships, and after the cheer program ended, I went to a competitive cheer team. I have cheered for around eight years, which is something I never thought would happen. I found passion in the sport that started from, from me cheering at my elementary school program. It is a good opportunity for these kids to be able to express themselves in a different way. If I never cheered throughout the years, I wouldn't have ever discovered passion for other sports or make new friends. My coaches, my coach cares enough to keep training students for cheerleading, and I believe the middle school basketball and cheerleading program is a great way to invest a portion of Board of Ed funding.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kashina Aboney. Oh, sorry. The next speaker is Selena Feliciano.
Hello, my name is Selena Feliciano, and I think that sports should not, their funding should not get cut because sports play a big role in students' lives. Sports provide multiple benefits other than physical fitness. Participating in this work can help students develop life skills like social interaction, teamwork, leadership, time management, and responsibility. Sports also help with reducing stress and having a healthy lifestyle. When I first joined cheerleading, I was very quiet and shy, and now I am in my third year of cheer, and I am more outgoing. Throughout each cheer year, I've made new friends. Cheer has taught me a lot, like teamwork, responsibility, and discipline. I think that sports, that sports have a very good opportunities for students and children, children in general. This is why I think that sports funding should not get cut. Thank you for listening to my opinion.
The next speaker is Crystal Rosa.
I'm actually going to defer and let my captain speak, if you allow me at the end.
Hello, I'm Carter Shori. I am the chair captain of Caribe Varsity Team, and I'm deeply concerned about the Board of Education's consideration in discontinuing sports in Bridgeport Public Schools. Sports are more than just games for the children of Bridgeport. They are a lifeline, offering structure, hope, and opportunity in an ever-challenging world. Eliminating sports program in this community would have devastating consequences, robbing kids like me the chance to develop essential life skills like teamwork, discipline, and resilience. For many, sports provide an outlet to escape the stresses of a daily life, a safe environment to build friendships, and a platform to dream big. Without these programs, children can lose not only their physical activity, but also the confidence and sense of belonging that come with being part of a team. Moreover, sports often act as a bridge to brighter futures. For many students in Bridgeport like myself, rely on athletics as a stepping stone to college and high school scholarships and mentorship opportunities and career paths we might not otherwise envision. Sports also keeps kids out of trouble and off the streets. Taking away these programs can strip us of these pathways, feeling us, leaving us feeling abandoned and undervalued. Imagine the impact of a child who has poured their heart into a sport only to have that passion taken away. It sends a harmful message that dreams don't matter. Sports have the power to transform lives, inspire hope, and develop unity in Bridgeport. For the sake of the children in the community, we must protect these opportunities and ensure every child has a chance to thrive on and off our field and courts. Thank you.
I have the next speaker as Tina Rembisch.
Esteemed board members, I stand before you today as a resident and a taxpayer who's never had a child in Bridgeport Public Schools. However, I came to make a passionate plea to preserve our middle school basketball program because as a lifelong coach and teacher, I've seen the power of after-school athletics in the middle school years change kids. I understand the financial constraints we face. However, I urge you to consider the invaluable impact this program has had on our students, particularly in these challenging times. Studies have shown that student athletes exhibit improved grades, attendance, and behavior while in season. Many of those very same students, grades, attendance, and behaviors deteriorated out of season. The structured discipline and time management skills honed on the court translate directly into the classroom. We must not forget the equity issue. Our students, particularly those in inner-city neighborhoods, only have the basketball and cheerleading program to choose from. Their neighboring peers enjoy much more than this. We are perpetuating a cycle of inequality that limits their potential. It's about providing our students with the tools and opportunities they deserve to succeed. Investing in our youth is not just a moral imperative, it's a strategic investment in our community's future. If we table it after they'd already begun, we're essentially saying that these values are less important. We're shortchanging our students and limiting their potential. There's a Spanish proverb that says, "More grows in the garden than the gardener knows he planted." As we're making important decisions about what to fund, suspend, or cut, we need to think about what kind of garden we want to plant and all of the things that grow there, both the intended and unintended. Our actions as adults speak powerfully. Let's make sure we live by the rules of acceptance, justice, and equity before we make a decision that will impact lives for decades. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam or someone from the IT department, there is some kind of indicator noise that is really loud that comes up when people are speaking, and it's distracting. So there's no way that we can silence it for now? Okay, all right. I'm just asking. It's annoying. All right. The next speaker would be Stephen Wolf.
Good evening to the members of the Bridgeport Board of Education. My name is Stephen Wolf, and I am the girls' head basketball coach at Central High School. I've been leading the girls' basketball program now since the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two winter season. I'm here today to express my resounding support for the approval and continuation of the middle school basketball program that's being currently administered by Bridgeport Caribe Youth Leaders. I can personally testify to the benefit that the Bridgeport Middle School Basketball Program has been to not only my high school program, but also to our sister programs at Harding High School and Bassett High School. Not to mention, in fact, it also has benefited Bullard Havens Technical High School as well. I can also attest to the fact that, as a girls' high school basketball coach, I always look to get statistics to help elaborate a point of focus for our female student athletes. I'll share a few with you all here today, which I hope illustrates the benefit that this middle school basketball program has been to us. As of today, we have fifty-two girls actively engaged in our basketball program at Central. Of that, fifty-two, thirty-eight, or seventy-eight percent, seventy-three percent, excuse me, of the girls participating in that program have come directly and been participants in the middle school basketball program. I'm sure you've heard reports of late where girls' basketball has really been declining in numbers. Well, that's not the case here in Bridgeport. In fact, the numbers are actually increasing. Quite often, I get joked about the fact that I have an army of girls always participating in these programs that we take full advantage of. This Bridgeport Middle School Basketball Program has become the feeder program for us at Central. And so I ask, and I strongly encourage you, to allow this program to continue on. Thank you.
Next speaker on the list is Molly DeAndrea.
Good evening. My name is Molly DeAndrea. I live at one twenty-four Seaside Avenue in Bridgeport. I have two children in Bridgeport Public Schools, an eighth grader and a sixth grader. It's a, just picture this. It's a crisp Saturday morning, and community members of all shapes and sizes and colors and languages arrive at the Bassett High School gym. The gym's a little dilapidated, a little darker, even a little dusty, because the floor hasn't gotten a wax job in a few years. And the referees show up, and they look a little sleepy because this is their second job, too. The coaches roll in and corral their team's players, who are a little nervous, a little jittery, but definitely amped. The scorekeeper set up their table, the buzzer sounds, the nine A. M. games have started. The sounds of fans cheering and feet stomping, of refs' whistles, and teams' benches rallying their players. These sounds of joy, because that's what it is, it's joy, continue throughout the day in games across the city, at Harding High School and Central High School as well, affecting far more than the seven hundred-plus students officially involved. Because there is something far more important happening than just a ball being shot through a hoop. What is happening is the creation of hope and community. And this community is the exhausted but unflagging teachers who take time out of their busy Saturdays to come cheer on their students, the teeny-tiny little siblings who race up the bleachers to root for their older brother or sister who's playing, the parents who make time in between their multiple jobs to take pride in watching their children be a part of a team, the older folks, grandparents, even my own father, wheelchair-bound, who I push into the gym every Saturday without fail to watch his grandson and granddaughter play. This gym might not be as bright and shiny as their suburban counterparts, but in a community that still, despite everything it is up against, keeps holding out hope, these moments shine with something far more valuable than a fancy gym or the latest equipment. They shine with that hope and community.
I'm sorry, wrap up your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Brittany Richardson.
Good evening, my name is Brittany Richardson. I live at forty Rapid Circle in Bridgeport, Connecticut. I am a parent and my daughter is actually here. And I'm going to just quickly talk about what basketball have done for her. She started in fifth grade. In the fifth grade, that's when I started having a little bit of trouble with her, her self-esteem and her confidence. Her friends tried out for basketball, so she did as well. And ever since then, she has become a student athlete. And I can, what I mean, I'm so humble to say that she is a two-time Bridgeport Middle School MVP. And it's thanks to Caribe and her coaches and her teachers that have supported her through this time. She is now, I am getting phone calls from high schools, not for sports, but academically. And she was, what I mean, math and science were not her strongest points. She is now at the top of her class in both. And that is due to Caribe and its basketball. I am a standing, I have played basketball for Bridgeport Middle School, Re-School. I have made connections. My friends, they are in places, high places, that I couldn't even imagine. But that's because of what basketball have done for us. And I plead with you to continue to make sure that our kids get the best that they can in the city of Bridgeport. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize in advance, it's real hard to understand. Is it Jasmine? Jess Mariah, sorry.
Hello, my name is Jess Mariah Dovar. Currently, I attend Notre Dame, but I previously attended Bridgeport Public Schools at Black Rock and I play basketball. I was astounded when I heard you would be removing such an impactful sports program. Taking away basketball, the basketball program doesn't just remove the game, it removes the chance for students to build confidence, stay active, and be a part of a supportive community. For many of us, basketball hasn't been a pathway to opportunities we might not get otherwise if this program did not exist. It connects us to something bigger than ourselves and helps to develop skills that we can carry with us along, even after the court. During my time playing for Black Rock School, I've had amazing coaches, developed long-term friendships, and it's allowed me to become a better leader. And I personally now take and utilize my freshman and now sophomore year of high school. My sixth-grade year of school, due to COVID, I was not able to play and it affected emotionally and socially. The opportunity aroused my seventh-grade year to play. And automatically, my academics, physical, and emotional state grew and improved my world. I urge you to reconsider your decision for removing this program because I believe it's a valuable asset to our youth and our future. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Excuse me. I'm sorry, if you need to use your phones, your cellphones, can you please step out? I want to give everybody the respect that they deserve when they come up to the podium. Okay. Yeah, IT just clarified of why you keep getting interrupted while you're speaking because apparently the link to tonight's meeting was given out to the public. And now we have people from the public log in. So every time somebody logs in, that's what you're hearing is people logging in. So if you are a member of the public, please log in on YouTube, you said? BridgeportEDU.net, log into that link, please. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Trever.
Trouble hearing that speaker? Because Ms. Kennedy was speaking on the phone right behind her.
I'm sorry, please. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Right, yeah, okay, we got you. Okay, I already had said that if you need to use your cellphone, please step out of the room, it's okay. Thank you. All right. Our next speaker is Jess Resto.
I'm Jess Resto, Park City PAC President, one-ten Jennings Avenue. The consequences of this board's actions are undeniable. A minimal amount of effort has led to a complete failure, leaving us with nothing but finger-pointing. Anyone paying attention could see the disaster unfolding when the chair consolidated committees, reduced meetings, and cut back on the essential flow of information. Most members of this board have rubber-stamped the superintendent's reckless spending, and as a result, we are now facing a projected deficit by year-end. Those of us who have been monitoring the budget closely can see the futures of our children are being squandered. This is a shameful situation and the community's trust and the board's ability to fix the problem has been completely shattered. Given the mishandling of the crisis, someone must be held accountable for the failures that have led us here. Additionally, I received letters from students at Park City Magnet Middle School pleading for the continuation of the Caribe Youth Programs they rely on. While I understand that cuts must be made due to our district's financial challenges, it's crucial that you listen to our children and fully recognize the lasting impact of these decisions on our lives. I have a letter. I also, Angel Resto signed up for time. He told me I can have his time if you don't mind. It says, "Hello, my name is Jen. I'm an eighth-grader student at Park City Magnet. You should not remove the Caribe programs. I was in cheerleading in sixth grade and it was a blast. We went to actual games, we cheered for the Knicks, and we made new friends and more. I was a base. Now, a base in cheerleading is the people who hold the flyer, who's in the stunts, up in the air. You can't have a stunt without two bases, a back spot to support the flyer and flyer. Cheer made me more flexible, and that's coming from someone who did ballet, figure skating, and gymnastics before. Basketball season is a big moment, not only for cheerleaders, but for the teams going head-to-head against one another. We practiced and cheered at different high schools like Fairchild Wheeler and cheered at Central and Harding. Plus, it's fun. It's fun to do. Cheer changed my life for the better. I made new friends with people I didn't know. All of them would be devastated if you got rid of it. Basketball season is fun and exciting, and there's no single way to describe the feeling of euphoria I felt when I was cheering. I learned a ton of useful skills I will need to... Wait, I learned a ton of useful skills I will need to, I will need to pursue my dream career as a performer. I'm here to persuade you not to get rid of it. Cheerleading builds teamwork, socialization, flexibility, agility, and strength. Basketball builds character, confidence, skill, teamwork, and yet again, accountability and strength. You need to communicate and strategize to win a basketball game, and in cheer, you need to formulate dances and synchronized moves to get the crowd hyped up. It's not just a sport or a dance, it's an art. Have you ever seen a flyer get shot up in the air during a halftime show? You need to communicate for that. Every move in cheer was planned from a simple tumble to full-blown stunts. Every move in basketball, basketball must be well-played or the whole game plan falls apart. It's not about winning or losing, it's about having fun while learning skills. I always loved basketball season. There are students in my graduating class, and I can tell you, they aren't happy about the cancellation of Caribe Cheer at all. If you remove basketball and cheer, who knows what you will get rid of next? With policymakers have a mentality that if they cut something and a few people complain, it's okay to cut one program, another as well. But if you're thinking of removing middle school basketball, that could bleed into a high school, and that can cause discontent in the young community, especially kids my age and older. And upwork can lead to rage and anger, and a group of angry people can lead to riots, rage, and annoyance in the community and more. I wouldn't threaten violence, but you can demonstrate how these activities help keep kids focused and out of trouble. If you can investigate our programs to cut and keep basketball and cheerleading, it would mean the world to us. If we need money for those programs, perhaps we can raise funds somehow, such as bake and snack sales at the games. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joe Baalco.
Good evening, Board. My name is Joe Baalco. I have a few of my athletes here since I am the head coach of Black Rock School Girls Basketball Team. I have my three captains, Ally, Dallas, Kaden, and arguably, the little heart of the team, Tryste Andrea. I've been the coach for the past two seasons, and I'm here to advocate, not just for my team, but for all of the kids in the city when I say, "Please do not cut middle school basketball." Sports are education. And I have watched these girls on my team learn collaboration, develop as leaders, and become excellent problem solvers. They have also developed strong and healthy rivalries with other schools and learned how to win with humility and grace. And they've also learned that losing is sometimes a part of life, but it helps you grow as an individual, as a team member, and as a part of your community. It breaks my heart just thinking about their season not happening. And sadly, these girls will have nothing they can learn from this kind of loss. Let the kids play, and we all end up as winners. And now a few words from my team.
Hi, my name is Dallas Carter, and we are basketball players at Black Rock School. Basketball has motivated me to do well in school and helps us look forward to the school day. This program also lets people out of their comfort zone and make new friends, and they make incredible memories.
Hi, my name is Allison Cassidy. This basketball program is so fun. But not only is it fun, it builds a community and a family for students in and out of school. It can also let kids play and understand teamwork and learn more life lessons. It's not just basketball.
Hi, my name is Tryste Andrea. I hope that these reasons encourage you to fund the league. It really does make a difference in every player's life. Thank you.
Kids are doing a phenomenal job, by the way. Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Kenneth Moles Jr.
Good evening, Kenneth Moles Jr., forty-nine Elwood Place. I come as the former Treasurer for the Bridgeport Board of Education and Vice President as well as Chairperson for the Bridgeport Board of Education. I think that the purpose of this meeting, the reason I came back, is I don't think, you know, the history of Caribe, the purpose and why they were funded through Title IV is an initiative that we created over eight years ago so that they would never not be funded again. So what you all are doing is completely against what we put in place. When we entered into the district, they had already closed down elementary schools, lost gym funding and after-school programming. This is why we pulled it from Title IV. I don't know how you all got a control to touch any of that or stop the funding. Caribe should never, ever be discussed or touched in any way. It comes directly from Title IV, from the federal government, to Connecticut, to you. It has no place to be put in any other area or budget item. The other issue that's going on here is you have too many people down in the executive office. You hire back too many assistant superintendents. You have too many people in the front office and not enough resources for the school. One of the problems that is happening with this board is you have walked away from student-first budgeting. Everything that comes from funding just started the student, and then you decide what you cut from the adults. So in closing, I think it's very essential that you understand Caribe is an outgoing from Title IV so that it never has to come before the boarding as a discussion of financing because as you see, it's now servicing seven-hundred. When we started, they didn't even have a hundred students enrolled. So the growth is there, the interest is there, the parents are there. Another thing that is very concerning to me is the Bridgeport Military Academy was supposed to be a feeder to the Bridgeport Public Schools Police Department and Fire Department. Since the last ten years, they have less than ten students that are actually on the police force and less than five that are part of the fire department. BMA was supposedly a feeder in order to fill up our police department and our fire department. And finally, Bridgeport, Bullard Havens Technical School is supposed to be one of the resources that the city hires. I went to Steel Point as well as Bassett High School. There's not one student from Bullard Havens Technical School at any of these sites, which means the city is building in a city with students, for students, and they're not allowing the students at Bullard Havens to actually be employed, get the training, and get the resources necessary. We are robbing our students.
Thank you, Mr. Moles. We have two speakers to go. Our next-to-last speaker is Ms. Joanne Kennedy.
Good evening. The scripture is John eight thirty-one to thirty-two. Within that scripture, it says, "That ye shall know the truth, and the truth shall make you free." Because a lot of people don't want to be free. You don't want to be free. You want to be free to do the things that have to be done. I admonish everyone in this room, and especially the Board of Education, to do your history and to do research. Okay? This is education. Look up the history of Bridgeport Public Schools. Look up the history of the past Board of Education and the Board of Education members and what has decisions that have been made. They were not in line with the student outcome, okay? This has been an alliance district for over twenty years, meaning it's a failing district. If you don't understand a word, look it up, it's in the dictionary. We have amazing teachers. I keep hearing that. But yet, we're still in an alliance district for over twenty years. You can't have both of those, okay? All right. Closing schools? This is not just this superintendent's idea. Other superintendents in the past have brought this up. Their financial people, Mr. Nester said what he said. If everything was in line, we wouldn't have anything to worry about, would we? The state of Connecticut is not going to bond hundred-year-old schools. So do all the studies that you want. Should studies be done? Probably. But they're not going to bond a hundred-year-old schools. They're not going to do it, okay, to renovate them. All right? Do your history search, okay? Look it up. Other people have presented that. Several things have come before this board. You guys shut them down for whatever your political reasons are. Student first. Yes, okay? One more thing and I'm done.
Wrap up your comment.
Yes, ma'am. I was a cheerleading coach at Bassett for two years, a cheerleading coach at Dunbar for three years. We did a lot of fun, we did that all on our own, okay? We didn't need that. We have three NBA players that came...
Wrap up your comment, Ms. Kennedy.
Three NBA players that came out of this school alone. So that should tell you how important sports are, and we need more programming in sports.
Thank you. The last speaker for the night is Bella Smart.
Hi, my name is Bella, and this is a story about Caribe. We are a family of Caribe. We are a happy Caribe squad. We do Caribe. And I feel a friend of Caribe, which is I'm a cheerleader friend. I am, I help all my friends. I help all of my teams till the end of my time, and I'm happy with my teammates.
If I may. So I'm actually the cheer coordinator for Caribe. I started this three years ago with Willie. I just asked to be a coach and... I just asked to be a coach, and then after one year, he was like, you want to be a coordinator for Bridgeport Public Schools and help? What started, when I first started as six squads, including our squad, last year we had 10. This year, we have 15 squads waiting, waiting for you guys to basically say, hey, we're ready to go, okay? We went from a couple, 100 students to now over 200 students. And just cheerleading, never mind basketball, okay? Cheerleading, everyone thinks, oh, you know, it's cutesy. It's more than that. And not for nothing, you guys have actually asked the cheerleading squads to come to, what is it, the inaugurations, the jubilees, or whatever, for the superintendent, asking for these squads to come out and represent for Bridgeport and to make her look good and make all of you guys look good. It's time for you guys to do something for these kids. Simple as that.
Thank you for all the public comments. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Mr. Benahan has made a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting from November 12, 2024. Is there a second? All in favor? Oh, it's been seconded by Ms. Perez. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mrs. Sokolovick abstains, and so does Mr. Treber. The next item on the agenda is the chairman's report. Chair Baptiste Perez, I'm sorry, we didn't discuss that earlier, if you had a chairman's report or not?
There's no report for this week.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports. So I just wanted to thank Ms. Tahiba Bain for filling in for me at the last Facilities and Finance Committee meeting, which was held on Monday, November 18. During that meeting, we had a facilities update by Mr. Garcia's staff, and we also had a presentation of the Bridgeport Public Schools Fiscal Year 2425 Financial Condition Report as of October 30 and potential gap-closing measures, and that was presented by Mr. Unco. Are there any referrals to Facilities and Finance? Any referrals at this point to Facilities and Finance? I have one more meeting to go as chair next month, and that will be the last meeting for me as chair, I'm pretty sure. So if anybody has any referrals, please let me know now, or you can email them to me if not. Okay, all right. The next committee report, Instruction and Support Services Committee? Ms. Perez.
The Instruction and Support Services Committee did not meet this month. We will meet again tentatively for December 11. That's a Wednesday. And usually those meetings are at 5:00 PM at City Hall, Room 305. I'll take any referrals.
Referrals for the Instruction and Support Services Committee? Mr. Benahan, Mr. Benahan?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Ms. Perez, I'd like to get any of your report, the students' grades, report, update, lack promotion, and retention. Also, the comprehensive bullying report, including the number of substance and unsubstance incidents. And the last one, the data and update on the number of students attending in person and the number of remote learns. I will email you all this information. Thank you.
Any other referrals? Oh, sorry, Mrs. Sokolovick, mic gone, okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I'd like to refer a review of all our programming, our professional developments, our online platforms for student learning, like the textbooks. We've done, historically, we've done a bad job as a board of reviewing things after we purchased. Perhaps we could use thought exchange and send out a survey to which programs the teachers like, which ones they don't, which are effective, which they aren't. That would be helpful in informing us in some of the budgetary decisions coming up because we want to try to keep what's working and get rid of what's not.
Any other referrals to the Instruction and Support Services Committee? Okay, before we go into the next agenda item, one thing that I did forget to mention is that the next Facilities and Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 16 at 6 o'clock at City Hall. Our next agenda item is Policy Personnel and the Contracts Committee. Madam Chair?
The committee did not meet in the interim. However, I do ask the district-wide when there are contracts that are coming up, that they're given in a timely manner, so that way they can be addressed by the committee. The next committee meeting is, actually, we have to get the date adjusted because items were not presented timely to the committee, so that's why we did not meet this month. But I'll follow up with committee members as to the December meeting.
Okay, are there any referrals to Policy Personnel and Contracts? Referrals for Policy Personnel and Contracts Committee? Oh, sorry. Mr. Medina?
Just for reference, just want to make sure the St. Peter's contract is supposed to be looming, it has been looming, that we will put that in the next committee agenda.
Okay, please follow up with an email, Mr. Medina. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the CAVE report. Madam Chair, did you want to take care of that, CAVE report?
The only thing to report is that the majority of the board attended the CAVE's CAPS convention last week. It was a good learning experience, one of the many required trainings. It's not necessarily required, but many of the trainings, and so that's all there is to report. There'll be another CAVE training the beginning of December for new board members, as well as for leadership roles. There's also another CAVE training coming up. Let's see if I can open it on my end really quickly to share. But I just ask that all board members, please check your emails, so that way you can also be fully abreast of all the the board training. December 9, there's a diversity webinar from 12 to 1:15 PM. December 17 is the legislative session webinar from 12 to 1:15 PM. And the new board member/leadership conference is December 3 from 8 to 5 PM.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, for that CAVE report. Dr. Avery, is there a superintendent's report?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I have a suggestion as an acting superintendent moving forward. I want to make sure I give the board the data sources that you need to be informed about. So I have a couple of slides I kind of want to walk you through of my thinking about what we want to put forth to the board at our monthly meeting. So as you look at, really being able to kind of give a view of what's happening within the system, what student data, those kinds of things. So as you, one of the highlights of, if you can move to slide 3, I think it is? Yeah, really talking about administrative updates. I think the community and the board needs to understand some of the things that the leadership team is doing, staffing updates, what's happening with staffing across the district, and then really looking at policy that guides the work administratively. In addition to the leadership piece of it, it's the academic progress. One of the things I think needs to be put forth is what's happening in our schools? What is the leadership and teachers engaging in? What are they making sure that we do? I think it's the next slide.
The next slide.
What are we doing on the curriculum and instructional point? Getting some of the data points that we're enacting within our school district, really looking at special programs. These are some of the things that I think as the acting superintendent that we need to be forward-facing to the community, so being able to kind of talk about that. Next stage is the operational updates. Being able to talk about the budget and finance, really a constant feed of what's happening with operations in the district. That's budget, that's facility projects that we're doing, and I'm talking about technology. Really incorporating into the superintendent's report things that are important to this community. So I want to make sure that we can look at some of those things. The next slide talks about student support and services. Talking about the well-being of the children in the district, really talking about special education services that we're doing and what we need to be part of this district. And then one of the things we talk about today is the extracurricular activities and things that's happening across the district. So it's not all about just one specific thing, but it's encompassing the things that are happening across this district. If the superintendent can be able to provide those pieces, informing and transparency with what we do in the district is going to be very important. The other piece of that is the community engagement side of the house. We're going to be really forward-facing this community about some of the tough decisions that we're going to be making. That should be part of the opportunity that I can engage with across the district, parent involvement, community involvement. And then there's a basic communication pieces that need to be forward-facing as well. Next stage of the game is talking about, you know, progress of district goals. You know, we need to make sure that's at the forefront of what we're doing across the district and strategic planning process. Then upcoming initiatives, things that are coming that we need to make sure that we keep in front of this community as well. I think the other piece of that, if you go to the next slide, it talks about compliance and accountability. Things that we do and things that this superintendent needs to be able to be forward-facing. Legality issues that we're dealing with, school improvement plans that we're dealing with. How are we going to make this district better by making sure that the compliance and accountability is at the forefront of what we do? And then I think the last piece is recognizing and the achievements that our staff and our students are doing and putting them up front, you know, at the podium about what they're doing. Some of the awards and accreditation that we're going to be doing moving forward as well. To me, that's what this superintendent report needs to be about. All about the things that we need to put forth about what's going on in this district. So I will take recommendations and suggestions from the board, but I kind of want to give you a little precursor of what I feel, as I sit as the acting superintendent, that I want to put forth to the board and to the community. So any questions, suggestions? Be glad to do that.
Anybody have any questions about what Dr. Avery just said? Mr. Woodson? Okay, Mr. Woodson, yeah.
I don't really have a question. I have a comment in this regarding of a conversation that I had with a parent yesterday. And, you know, I think members of the community are under the impression that if the superintendent left, that all the things that she put on the table were off the table. So I think there's a real disconnect with the community. And hopefully, you know, you said you would, but hopefully the outreach is direct and, you know, upfront with the community. And I hope, you know, everybody who's making the decision on there is with you while you're explaining this to people. So, you know, because like I said, there is a big, big disconnect. So hopefully, we could sit down with the community and tell them about the tough decisions that we had to make and that, you know, it was basically in the making for the past five years since 2019, right? So I don't understand how, whatever, but hopefully we get to communicate with the community.
Thank you, Mr. Woodson. Next is Mr. Oh, oh. Yes, Mr. Treber, sorry.
Yeah, I like the idea. Obviously, that was a lot. As you skip through those many bullet points, and I'm betting that most of you in the audience couldn't read them all. I had trouble seeing this screen up here. But I do know that we have a huge screen up here that if it was projected up there, you would all be able to read them all. So I'm just going to suggest that if we continue to meet here, and I like this meeting location, that we project this up here so everybody can see it. Because it was a lot of substantive stuff. And in response to Mr. Woodson's comment, I think that's part of what we're trying to figure out is who thinks they've got committed what? Because we got to figure out what people think we said in the last nine months to a year we said we should be doing, and what can we afford to do? And we've got to figure that out. And that's what we're in the process of trying to figure out what we can do. So you're absolutely right, Mr. Woodson. We need to make sure what people think we're supposed to be doing and what we can do, and make sure that we straighten all that out. So it's a lot, it's a tall order, and we got a lot of work to do. And we need everybody to be pulling in the same direction. So I think we got to put it on the big screen so everybody can see it so that we can all know what we're talking about.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sokolovick?
Yes, thank you for that presentation, Dr. Avery. And very good. Look forward to seeing some of this. One suggestion I have, definitely got to recognize our students. If you go into our bylaws, we're supposed to be noticing quarterly recognition service is for our students, and we need to really bring that back because we got away from it. I mean, it's great to bring them to the podium during a medium meeting every now and then, but in the past, it got so extensive, that's why we moved to the quarterly recognition. And it's a whole day. The families can come out, the board comes out, everybody dresses to the knives. And it's a big to-do, and we need to get back to it as a community celebration, basically. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, on that note that Mr. Joe said, I would like to bring to your attention, and I'm working on some things already in communication, but Bassett High School soccer team, I would love to recognize them next board meeting. And you can start with that, maybe. I can give you the coaches, Coach Sal's number. And we would love to recognize that team. I've already been speaking to a few people, and I'll send that email to you. But that'll be a great one for the next board meeting, to have the families and the coach and the team. They've made it to the third round of the states, and it's
Yes. And I have some of their data as far as where they come from and how far they've come. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Avery? Mrs. Sokolovick?
Yeah, Dr. Avery, it's basically not about the report, but we got an addendum to the lease. Did you want this added to the agenda so we can move on to today?
It would be great if we can do that. They've been waiting for about six months to get that approved. So if there is a motion on the floor to make that happen, that would be great.
Right, I'd like to make a motion to add on the old business the second addendum to the lease agreement with St. Peter's Roman Catholic Church Corporation and Bridgeport Board of Education.
All right, it has been moved by Mrs. Sokolovick and Mr. Benahan, seconded. All in favor? Aye.
No, it's going to require two-thirds votes, so just make sure you have two-thirds.
All right, please do a roll call. And two-thirds votes for the people present, is that right? Just period, everybody. And two-thirds votes would be six people, correct? Okay, Madam Secretary. Oh, yeah, to add to the agenda? Oh, sorry. Dang it. Dang it. Dang it. What is she? Yeah, but yours is not. Oh, there you are. Okay, sorry. Mr. Medina, can you cut your mic off, please?
All right, the motion is to
All right, the motion is to add to the agenda, the lease agreement to the old, sorry, add to the old business, the second addendum to the lease agreement for St. Peter's. Tahiba Bain?
Pass.
Christine Baptiste Perez?
I'm going to vote no because I think this is procedurally incorrect. The will of the board was to refer this to committee. Nothing was ready at the time for committee with this lease. So I believe the proper motion is to rescind. That way it's rescinded and then it can be added back onto the agenda. But the board last moved to have this back on the committee level.
Point of information, there was no vote to put it to committee. It was a simple referral, there was no motion, no second, no vote. So there is no vote to rescind. Proper motion on the floor right now.
Can't hear you, you need to use your microphone and you need to be recognized by the chair.
Thank you. The point of information, Kennedy.
Um, Mr.?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Mrs. Sikolovick?
As I said, there was no motion. The information that you gave is incorrect. There was a simple referral.
No, you're incorrect. And that's fine if you want to ignore the rule. But you haven't been recognized by the chair.
I have the floor.
You have not been recognized by the chair.
I have the floor.
You have not been recognized by the chair.
I have the floor.
You have not been recognized by the chair.
All right, everybody, please.
I have the floor, may I please?
Madam Chair.
Please conduct yourself.
Mrs. Sikolovick has been recognized. Mrs. Sikolovick?
There was no motion, there was no second, there was no vote. So there is nothing to rescind. There is, in fact, a proper motion on the floor, which has been properly seconded. We have a proper attorney in the building who could actually speak to that if Madam Chair still wishes to refer to him.
Yes, Attorney Dugis, right?
Nope.
Which one is he? Mr. Anastasi, excuse me, Attorney Anastasi. Oh, can you go over to the mic, Miss? Thank you. Just push that button from here. Podium, podium. All right, there we go. Mic on. Mrs. Sikolovick, can you clarify for the attorney, please?
Thank you. Yes. The only proper motion on the floor, there was never a motion, there was never a motion to refer. It was just a simple referral. That does not need to be, you don't need to rescind a referral, it just falls to the floor for lack of, lack of emotion. There's no motion, there's no second.
Well.
There was no vote.
It was, if it was referred, unless I'm wrong, things only get referred by a vote to refer, but I don't have your minutes. I do know.
It was referred at this very meeting, sir. It was just a referral made by Mr. Medina. And the chair of facilities wrote it down, I mean, contracts wrote it down to be emailed, the referral, to put it on the next agenda.
Problem, I think, is that it was already previously referred to committee. Now, at the city council level, this is not in your bylaws. At the city council level, there's a rule that says no matter may be acted upon without first being referred to committee. I don't believe you have that. Therefore, regardless of whether something was submitted to committee previously, if you wanted to act on it tonight, you could simply add it to the agenda and act on it despite the fact that it might be pending in committee, which, which would then become a mood issue.
Thank you.
So that's the short answer I have. Maybe that's something that should be clarified when you update your bylaws. But I don't know that you necessarily want to be as strict as the city council is. The difference there is because you have legislation and so many different items that they, they want to do the work in committee. I think a lot of your work gets done at your board meetings from what I've observed. So it's entirely up to you. But you do have to add it to the agenda.
Thank you.
And there needs to be a two-thirds vote, right?
Right. But, and I'm checking, but I could be wrong and I'm checking it. But I think it's two-thirds of those present voting, not of the entire body. But I will double check that, it's going to take.
I'll give you a minute to do that, just so we can make sure.
It's six people.
Oh, that's right, we have the other film, so it's a moot point. I didn't notice the both of them originally, but moot point, six votes, you can act on it tonight.
Okay, now can Madam Secretary? All right, I'm sorry.
There it is. Turn it off. Albert Benahan? He wants his mic off.
Looking forward, yes.
Akeisha Casimir?
Yes.
Willie Medina?
Yeah.
Jennifer Perez, yes. Joseph Sikolovick?
Yes.
Robert Traver? Andre Woodson? And Tahiba Bain?
Yes. Thank you for the clarifications, too.
Seven, two, carries.
Okay. My only question about this to, oh, I'm sorry.
If it's added to the agenda, the question is, you don't need to do it now, you can do it at the end.
Right, that's what I was going to ask. Okay, so then we'll, because D is going to be for last. Okay. It's under, oh, it's going to be here. B. Okay, got it. Oh, you mean right after Caribe's vote? Okay. That was the superintendent's report. Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion and possible approval of continuation agreement for after-school programming with Bridgeport Caribe Youth Leaders. Just so I let the public know, this is the second time that this has been on the agenda. So if this fails tonight to pass, it cannot be placed back on the agenda like ever again. Am I correct? Am I correct with that, Mr. Anastasi? What I, from my understanding, since this item has already been on the agenda and it did not pass, this is the second time it's been, that it's been on the agenda. If it does not pass tonight, that means that it cannot be brought back on the agenda at all. Is that right? Oh, it's not. Oh, it was tabled, it wasn't. Oh, I, excuse me, I apologize, that's my fault. I thought that the vote didn't go through, but it was actually tabled. I thought it didn't go through. Okay, my apologies. Mr. Benahan, did you have a question?
Not a question, I'm not my share, but before we had the discussion about the Caribe, whoever one of the board members vote no tonight is a shame because we need to support the students. We got some money. Sometimes we got money to hiring or buying stuff is not necessary. We here, the reason we here because the parent trust and the vote for, we here for the students. So whoever vote no is ashamed. It's a shame for rest of your life when this case we here to support it a hundred percent. I know a lot of things going up and down, but I have to say thank you for Mr. John Torres, Mr. Willie, Ms. Ruth, all your team, you do the amazing job for our students. We appreciate your amazing job and you always going to have my support. I just want to put that for the record, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benahan. Ms. Perez?
I'll make the motion to approve the continuation agreement for after-school programming with Bridgeport Caribe Youth Leaders.
All right, it was approved by, it was moved by Ms. Perez, seconded by Ms. Chair Baptiste Perez. Can we have a roll call vote? Oh, sorry. Discussion, excuse me.
Point of order, we're now in debate?
We're now in debate. Sorry, I apologize, we're now in debate. I forgot when it, somebody makes the movement and somebody seconds it, then it's debate afterward. So my apologies. The maker of the motion, right, is, no, nothing? All right, so Mr. Sikolovick, looks like you're up.
Yeah. This is not a simple decision, it's not as simple as people feeling ashamed of themselves. There are some things unseen. Yes, this is Title IV funding. We see you in front of us. It hurts to death that we even got to consider cutting funding for us. But as we consider as a board, we got to keep in mind, there's other things that Title IV can fund. I'm going to read a little bit of the list off of what we are saying no to as we say yes because money can only be spent one time. This funding could be used for college and career guidance. This money can also be used for music and arts education, science, technology and engineering, accelerated learning programs, American history, civics, economics, geography and government education, foreign language, environmental education, volunteerism and community involvement and multidisciplinary programs. It could be used for suicide prevention. It could be used for trauma-informed practices in the classroom management, crisis management and conflict resolution. School-based violence prevention strategies, drug abuse prevention, bullying and harassment prevention, child sexual abuse awareness and prevention, positive behavioral interventions and support, promoting professional learning for educators, building technology and infrastructure, developing or using effective or innovative strategies for delivery of academic content through the use of technology, providing students in rural, remote and underserved areas expanded access to educational opportunities through use of technology. Now, I have no issue with Caribe, I have no issue with sports. I believe they are very valuable. I do not disagree with any, I do not disagree with anything anybody has said out here, out here. Sports are very valuable. Sports have been in the city for quite a while. There used to be, before Caribe came along, a city, a city, a city program where they cooperated and the city funded part of it. And there was no, no, no involvement for Caribe. There, in fact, one of the schools actually won the championship. There's a lot of volunteer schools, a lot of coordinations with the Parks Department. And the program can continue if there's innovation. When we say yes to one thing, we're saying no to something else. Money can only be spent once. I am, I'm pretty sure this is going to pass tonight and I'm very happy for you as students. Just because I'm going to vote no is because I got to cut it somewhere else. I see the cut to perhaps suicide prevention. I see the cut, I see the cut from this one psychologist or two social workers or three parent professionals that can't be added through these programs. This is, this is what I see. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to Ms. Baptiste Perez and then Mr. Benahan. Ms. Baptiste Perez?
I just want to say that I, I hope tonight that this motion passes. We've already, as a school district.
I just need to know what exactly.
I'm sorry, Ms. Baptiste.
I'm sorry, Ms. Bain.
Thank you. Ms. Baptiste Perez, continue.
Yeah, I just want to let the board know that this board has already limited, put the sports program at risk. Most other schools have already started their middle school basketball after-school programs and we're already behind the eight ball with it. I, I think one of the big goals was always to take care of the whole child, not just, I think as a board, we would be aloof to think that it's purely academics, but students come for whether it's the performing arts, whether it's sports. And we've already put hundreds of children with regards to middle school basketball and cheerleading behind. And, and that's not acceptable. This weighing of the matters, when it comes to it, we need to be responsible for the whole child, sports is one of them. And this needs to pass today.
Thank you. Ms. Baptiste Perez, thank you. Mr. Benahan?
Thank you, Ms. Vice President. It's no money in the world to make happy any students in Bridgeport Public School. I don't care how much the cost, because we're here to support them. We sometimes we spend money, things we don't need it, it's not necessary. And we trying to make these kids happy. I know I agree with you a hundred percent, Ms. Sikolovick. We have things we can, you know, buy, you know, things we needed. But right now, we talking about kids. I receive so many text message, emails, call about so many parents, parents and parents and parents, that's what I'm here for. And one event, they touch me, they say, Mr. Benahan, thank to the sport, I'm not in the street. Thank to the sport, I'm doing so amazing things. Thank you all these people, they always there to support me. And you think I'm going to say no? I'm a father before I leave there. I'm a father before I leave that three young kids. And when I say I'm a father, I'm a father for almost 21, that's the students we have here. Because I care about them. I care about them. And it's time, it's time to the board education and board members before and after and whoever, it's time to step in and help our students. Enough is enough. It's a lot of drama and we don't want these kids see this. So let's step in and let's help our kids. It's our future, our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benahan. Mr. Traver?
Yeah, I have had thousands of emails and conversations over the last two weeks since I tabled this issue. Let me start with the hypocrisy of our chair, who should have put this on the agenda six weeks ago when it was originally supposed to be on the agenda and it would have been on the agenda four weeks ago when she chose not to have a meeting. So I will not listen to her hypocrisy here tonight.
Mr. Traver? What?
Excuse me, she's not entitled. No, I'm not, you're not the chair.
This is regarding debate of it, not for a board member.
There's a point of order.
Comments.
Does not have the chair floor. She chose not to have a meeting a week, a month ago.
Point of order, Madam Chair. If Mr. Traver is going to be allowed to use his delusional comments to make up a fiction.
You would have had your money a month ago.
It should not be appropriate that he's trying to finger point when he's tabled and delayed this matter.
All right, can we just have order, please? Can we have order?
Could we? You can mute her, Madam Chair.
No, I can't.
Like she's done to us all the time.
I don't have, I don't have the ability to do that.
So two weeks ago, I told you all.
Very bitter over there, Mr. Traver.
Okay, everybody, please, please calm down.
I'm not bitter, I'm sad about where we're at.
When you're playing around with children's opportunities, you want to use this as an opportunity to finger point instead of just being an adult and moving forward with it.
All right, Madam Chair, thank you, I'm sorry. Mr. Traver, can you?
I, I'm going, I'm trying.
Okay.
I'd like to be able to not be interrupted. I've spoken to a number of you in the audience, I haven't spoken to all of you. And I'd like to say this so that you all hear me. I have coached soccer for 27 years in this town, eight to 12-year-old girls, for free. I understand the value of youth sports. I understand its importance. I have coached with some of you in the audience here. And I've coached some of the girls in this audience here. There is, I don't disagree with the thing that was said tonight. Here's the conundrum we face. We don't know how much money we have. We don't know because it has been withheld from us for the last year and a half. We don't know how deep the mess is that we're in. We're beginning to scratch the surface and trying to figure it out. I am sorry that you have been caught in this quagmire. It should have, it would have been passed a month ago and we would not have come and said, nope, you got to give it back. You would have had it and the program would have started. I'm sorry that didn't happen. I'm sorry that I had to say table it until we can figure it out. This money, I don't, for those of you that live in the Basset neighborhood, we have serious problems at Basset.
Okay, please.
Where's Sergeant Parks? Where's the security to escort this?
Okay, this, a meeting with the public, not, I mean, it's a meeting in the public, not with the public. Mr. Traver?
I'd like to know where security is to escort Ms. Kennedy out of here for disrupting the meeting?
No. No.
There's, there's officer.
No, no, Mr. Traver.
Oh, I see, they can escort me out, they can escort Mr. Sikolovick out, but they can't escort the disruptor out who's walking up and down the aisle while I'm trying to speak.
If that's not the rule of any board member that rests with the chair, that's Ms. Akeisha Casimir.
All right, we got to have order, we got to have order, guys.
I have 10 minutes. I have 10 minutes. So I'd like to get my time, please. So as I have explained to many of you, I am 100% supportive of youth sports and everything that we can do to keep it up. This program was started, as Reverend Mole said, about eight years ago. It was started with stipends to teachers to run programs. In my school at Blackham, it was track. It wasn't basketball, it was track. The program Joe's referring to at Curial was basketball, run by the PE teacher there. They were undefeated for two years, it was a phenomenal program. At some point, Caribe got involved and has apparently done a phenomenal job. I have no qualms. I've known John for many years, I've recently gotten to know Willie. I know they do a good job. I used to threaten my own students and say, look, if you don't work hard, I'm going to go meet with your coach and talk about your report card and what's going on in class. I know the job Caribe has done over the years. So I'm not questioning the program. I'm questioning the situation that we're in, that we're just beginning to dig into over the last two weeks. We don't, we're going to hear later tonight what's come, what we found out so far. We have got a taste last Monday at the Facilities and Finance Committee meeting, and that was not much. We're going to find out more over the next few weeks. So this was never directed at your program or the importance of it. That was never a question in my mind. That was never a question in my mind or anyone else's mind. And I hope that you understand and believe me about that. It's a question of what can we afford to continue? What are we going to be able to afford to continue? And for those of you that were with the system as long as I was, I sat in the back of the Johnson Cafeteria as kindergarten parents were told, "If you don't transfer to Sped, you won't have a job." That's where we're going to be this summer. We're going to be there again, making those hard choices. And we're going to be there no matter what. The question is, what do we have to trim this year? And Mr. McQuo told us last week that we need to start trimming that kind of depth this year. Now, we don't believe that, and we all agree, I heard you applaud, that the first trim and the major trim this year has to be downtown. We all agree on that, too. Not in the classroom. We want to avoid the classroom trims as much as possible, and that includes these type of programs if we can. But the classroom is first. Additional programs are what we need to then have the hard discussions on this year. How many of those can we preserve? I'm sorry, Coach, you understand this. That's where we are. And so I don't know what the answer is. I can't tell you, we haven't gotten there yet. So I won't be voting for or against tonight. I'm still in the mode, we don't know enough to know. So I'll pass tonight because the issue's been forced. I would have tabled it again tonight.
All right, next speaker is Mr. Medina.
Many of you know who I am and what I'm about, and the members I've seen grow up in this community. Many of you have a coaching, and like Mr. Trayber, I coached also for 27 years, Bridgeport AYSO. My daughter played at Central High School, went on to play for Delaware Valley University in Pennsylvania. I know what sports has done in this community and around. I know what it is to be a volunteer. I know at this time, we need to do more with less. That's why I voted to table it. I didn't want to say no last time. I don't want to say no this time neither. But we are facing a hard decision that's going to be adding on to what's going ahead. I don't want you guys to go through the trauma any longer. I really don't. As a father of three daughters raised in Bridgeport, it's hard. Some other people think that I'm an emotional fool, and that's okay because I'm my mother's, and I belong to my mother. I don't want to forsake the little ones. And it's hard to say yes and to say no at the same time. But like I told some of you guys, some of the leaders within your group, I've never heard that we were removing anything. I never heard we were eliminating anything. That did not come from us. It might have come from other adults, but it did not come from me or from anyone on this board. Like my colleague said, and she's trying to take away the responsibility that she had as chair, this meeting should have happened months ago, guys. The honest truth.
You're making up stuff. It wouldn't have happened months ago.
My example that I was, and my example that I gave to some of your leaders was, if I have $1,400 in the bank and I need $2,100, I'm already $700 short. How can I be asked to give to you when I'm short already? So I don't know where I'm at, but my heart goes out to you guys because I don't want you guys to think that we're saying no to you, and we're not. We're not saying no. We want to try to do it in-house and try to find a way how we can do it together as a community. I wish that we can table this again to meet with the leaders and have the true adults speak. Again, let me speak. I respected you guys, and I just ask you guys to respect me. Some of yous have come up and talked with me and had meaningful discussions with me. I'm open to more discussion. I don't want to be forced to vote in any kind of way, and I won't be forced. I know that we have over 512,565 students to think about in this state and over 19,500 that I need to think about in our city. So you're not the only ones, but you are my ones that I have in front of me. So I just wanted to share that with you respectfully. If you want to talk to me after, I'm willing, I'm able. So please don't interrupt me. I thank you guys for everyone that spoke. Thank you for targeting me. But again, I got to think about what's ahead. I'm with you, I'm not against you. And I will volunteer, I will do whatever I need to do to sit at the table to make sure these programs move forward. I just wanted to say that. That's my commitment to you, and that's all I can commit to tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Medina. Are we still in debate? We're still in debate, anybody? Oh, Mr. Sokolovik. Mr. Sokolovik.
Yeah, thank you. Today may seem tough, but I haven't gone through this before with the last round of budget cuts. We ain't seen nothing yet. So everybody buckle up, get ready to buckle down because there's going to be some cuts, and it could be really, really painful. And just like everybody, get ready, prepare themselves. Our district is facing $36 to $38 million in cuts, school closures, and each one of these cuts we make is going to be a bigger and bigger turnout. And if we cut nothing, this state will take over and cut everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sokolovik. Mr. Benahan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know how many times we have cut, cut, and cut, and we don't have this, we have this, we hiring this, we don't hire that? So many things, and how many times for years before I was a board member, they always cut sports? For years. And I'm talking when my son was in first grade, when Webster School was open until he graduated from high school. Before I was a board member, I was listening about the sport cut this and cut that. Something very important. As today, two parents tell me, "Thanks to the sport, I'm out of the street." Just with that few words for me, it's a lot. And if we have to go and speak and talk, because remember, like I always say, we board member, we elected because the community votes for us. So us as our job, and I know we don't get paid for this, I'm doing almost all of this for 20 years as a district leader. This is my second turn as a board member. Let's go to Hartford. Let's talk to the people, we vote for them. All these people, they come when they need a vote, they need us to elect them, they come knock the door. They say, "Can you support me? Can you support me?" So now it's time, parent and students, and I'm going to try to do this, to go to Hartford to get my money. Because when they need us, we there. So now we need them for our kids. I'm not here to argue with nobody and get mad, but it's time to stand up, board members. It's time to parent stand up, students, staff, community. Let's go to Hartford. Because all these people over there in Hartford, they're there just because they not look nice or because they have a beautiful last name. They're there because we vote for them. So it's time for us to go over there and talk to them. It's our kids, our future. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Benahan, Mr. Trayber. Or, I'm sorry, Mr. Woodson, and then Mr. Trayber. Okay, Mr. Trayber.
Yeah, I, having disagreed with Mr. Benahan tonight, we often work together, as you know, and agree on this one. And that was the next point I wanted to make. This issue is a microcosm of what we're going to be doing for the next year. And we can't be doing this. We can't choose to fight on Kadee Bay, kindergarten paras, school counselors, social workers. There are dozens and dozens, probably hundreds of programs in our schools, which are all critical. And they're all going to be in jeopardy over the next six to nine months. And we can't have each little group saying, "No, no, mine's more important than yours." Because they're all important to the children in our schools. And we need to all come together to fight for them all. We can't fight for mine, and that's what I'm saying. We need to all come together this year. We need to come together with the city council for the fact that Waterbury gives $30 million more to their schools than Bridgeport. Now, I know we're not going to get $30 million out of the city of Bridgeport this year, or probably in my lifetime. But we need to fight for more money from the city of Bridgeport. And we need you and every other interest group fighting for their issues to be with us on that. There is a group called Connecticut for All, fighting with New Haven and Waterbury and Hartford and Danbury and Stanford to get more money out of Hartford because we have a $4.5 billion surplus in the coffers that should be given to the cities to help us get over this Esser Cliff, is what it's called, when the COVID money runs out. And we suddenly have these steep cuts. Hartford went through it last year. Towns and communities all over the state are going through it. And that money needs to be spent to help us, not just with schools, but affordable housing and community colleges and all kinds of needs. So we need you to help us with that, too, all over the state. And that also means a new tax structure in our state so that wealthier people are paying at the same tax rate as us working people. So we need your help on all those things to do, as Albert just said, go up to Hartford. And this is an issue that we pretty much all agree on, that we need to get more money from Hartford to help cover so that we can have the same opportunities for our children that are afforded to the children in wealthier communities. So that our children have those opportunities like they deserve.
Thank you, Mr. Trayber, Mr. Woodson.
Mr. Woodson. Can we, can we call this to a vote?
Oh. All right, Mr. Woodson has called the question.
I'll second.
And Christine Baptiste Perez seconded. What this basically means is that we're calling to just vote, to get the vote on and over with.
I'm sorry. A what?
A roll call, yes, definitely a roll call vote. All right, Madam. Okay, yes. The motion that's being voted on is approval of continuation agreement for after-school programming with Bridgeport Caribe Youth Leaders. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Perez. Yeah, okay.
And this vote is to call the question, not to actually vote on the item yet, right?
Oh, to call the question, I'm sorry, yes. Thank you.
So Tahiba Bane. Christine Baptiste Perez.
Yes, but point of clarification, just to have either Mr. Anastasi, but to call a question requires 2/3 of the vote of the voter body. I'm pretty sure about that much. So I'm going to vote yes to call the question.
Benahan.
Sorry.
Where's the cheerleaders? Can you, can you please stand up? Can you please stand up because this is for you? Yes. Thank you.
Akisha Casimir.
Yes.
Willie Medina. Jen Perez, yes. Joseph Sokolovik. And Robert Trayber. Just to call the question. Andre Woodson. Tahiba Bane calling the question. Yes, no? Medina? Got you. Tahiba votes yes. And Joseph Sokolovik. Okay, so we called the question. Now we can vote on the item.
Roll call vote to the item.
What, I'm sorry, what was that?
Roll call for the item.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, roll call. Okay. Yes. Who voted differently? Do we have an issue, Madam Secretary? No? Okay, roll call.
I'm getting the motion, sorry.
Okay.
The motion is the approval of continuation agreement for after-school programming with Bridgeport Kadee Bay Youth Leaders. Tahiba Bane?
Yes.
Christine Baptiste Perez?
Absolutely.
Albert Benahan?
Yes, see.
Akisha Casimir?
Yes.
Willie Medina? Jennifer Perez, yes. Joseph Sokolovik?
The name isn't on here? Can you press it? Oh, there it is.
No, with an explanation to be entered into the minutes. I'm glad that this is going to pass tonight for the people here, but I'm scared for the well-being of the entire district and the budget going forward. Thank you.
Robert Trayber?
I'm abstaining for the reason I said.
Andre Woodson? Willie Medina?
It's passing, so yes.
Yes. The vote carries.
Congratulations.
Madam Chair.
Madam, yeah, Ms. Bane?
Yes. I just, for the record, I just want to say that, you know, during the debate, I heard a lot. I just think that, you know, yes, there's going to be some drastic cuts. And I want to say this for the record, that the drastic cuts should not start without children. And that's all I wanted to say, is that we're going to have to have them, absolutely. But the children should not be the first to go, especially the sports. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bane. Our next item on the agenda was the one that we, that we added on is the second addendum to the lease agreement for St. Peter's Roman Catholic Church. Their motion?
Wait, but who's presenting on it? Because it never was vetted on committee, so.
I apologize, Ms. Attorney Anastasi.
Okay.
Podium, yeah, can you pit podium? There you go, yep.
Thank you. Just for the record, so I can clarify for future meetings. If you're adding an item to the agenda, number one, if it's a special meeting, you cannot do that. You probably all know that. If it's a regular meeting, you can, under Connecticut General Statute 1-225 subsection C, with a two-thirds vote of those present and voting. It's not of the entire membership. It's two-thirds of those present and voting. So that was just a background piece. The second thing is with respect to the St. Peter's contract. There were two, you should all have an email and a hard copy, I think.
I'm sorry, Mr. Anastasi.
Provided to you. There were two issues that were of concern. One has been fully addressed and one I want to discuss with you. The one that has been fully addressed was paragraph, in the prior version, there was a paragraph five, which has now been deleted. That paragraph released the landlord from any liability for past actions, whether we knew about them or not, could have impacted us if there was a lawsuit that was subsequently bought, brought against the district for something that occurred. The landlord has agreed to take that out, so that was the main legal concern. The other issue has been partially addressed, but I wanna make sure, A, you're comfortable with the resolution, and B, if you are, I wanna clear up the language by having you take a slight amendment to what you have in front of you. And that's paragraph three. If you go to paragraph three, paragraph three is termination during the three-year term. And originally, it said the parties can terminate upon 60 days' notice. We raised the issue on behalf of the district with the fact that obviously you didn't want a termination during the course of the school year. So the landlord proposed the language you have in front of you, which I don't think totally addresses it. The, what you have in front of you says it may be terminated upon 60 days' notice within 90 days of July 1st. Number one, I'm not 100% sure what that means, but more importantly, I have a solution to it. And what it should say is upon 60 days' notice to be effective July 1st. That's if you tell me, and this is an operational issue which I don't have the answer to. If you tell me that if somebody gives notice with 60 days ahead of July 1st, which would be roughly May 1st, you would have enough time to get a new facility for the following September, if needed. Now, that's probably the best you can get. So in other words, if the landlord said, we don't wanna lease to you anymore, and they gave you notice 60 days prior to July 1st, termination to be effective July 1st, school year's over July 1st, and the new school year doesn't start until the fall, you would have essentially five months to do something. That's probably the best you can hope for. Now, I have no doubt that this is a very, very unlikely scenario, that the landlord is gonna attempt to terminate early. And it would also require, if for some reason you have a new facility that you wanna use in lieu of this, you would have to give the notice at the end of the school year. And you would have to give the notice 60 days prior to July 1st, and you could shorten the lease. It seems fair. So if you understand that, and if you agree with that, then I'd want you to amend what was placed in front of you by deleting the language that says within 90 days of July 1st and substitute the language to be effective July 1st. And I'll answer any questions you might have, but I think that gets it done.
So again, Mr. Attorney Anastasi, they, within 90 days of July 1st of each year, this addendum should be replaced with to be effective July 1st.
Yes.
Of each year.
Correct. No, no, not of each year, just to be effective July 1st.
July 1st period.
Right. Because it's obviously not gonna be effective July 1st in arrears, it'd be the next July 1st. I'm sure the landlord would agree to that clarification, as long as that operationally works for the board. I see the superintendent shaking his head. I can't imagine you're gonna get much different than this. And again, in all likelihood, you're gonna be, unless, because of our issues with budget issues, absent that, I have no doubt that this would continue through the full. Yes, I don't know that you have any cheaper alternatives. I know you're looking at school closures, but I think this gives you the flexibility. If you look at your budget this year and you decide after the next several months of hard work that you wanna get out of this, you have to give 60 days' notice prior to next July 1st on the 2025, and you can get out. So I hope I'm not overcomplicating it.
Any questions, anybody? Oh, Ms. Baptiste Perez.
I have a question, and it's more for Dr. Avery. I'm just curious, this came into our portal five hours ago, and so I was not aware of this, like, who approved this to go onto the portal five hours ago, not given enough time for it to be read?
I'm gonna try to answer that because I'm not sure what you mean by the portal.
I mean, it's the board member portals that we read over the weekend, so that way we have access to all the materials that's gonna be brought forward. This is the first time I'm learning that there were physical copies given out, so that would have been a directive from the superintendent's office. It shouldn't have been a directive from the city attorney's office.
I don't give directives to any board member, but I would say that an email was provided at your last meeting. For, actually, it was provided, I think, on the night of a committee meeting, but it did not come up that night, so all board members had it electronically. You're probably 100% correct that nobody had it, hard copies, until tonight. That was just an added courtesy to give the board members a hard copy because it was an in-person meeting. But all board members, I believe, not just committee members, got it on the night of the finance committee meeting.
Thank you, Mark, but I wanna hear from Dr. Avery.
And that is correct, Christine, that's exactly the way it went down. I figured it was already presented to the board in a previous email. I wanted to make sure that if the board decided that they wanted to bring this back up, they were able to do that. We sent another email out, put it in the portal. Also, I provided hard copies to everybody present at their seats this afternoon as an additional opportunity for, again, that was a call of the board members that were here that decided to bring this up and add it to the agenda, and that's why it's before you this evening.
No, I have no problem with it being brought up by the board members as a call for it. My issue is that now stuff that was originally in contracts is now being overlapped with facilities, and that comes a call from your office. So why is that all of a sudden happening?
To my knowledge, this is the first time this happened. So if that was out of protocol, my bad.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Ms. Baptiste Perez?
I just take issue with it being out of protocol, my bad, when I don't hear that same kind of demeanor with my colleagues, but it's up, it's been made, it's under old business. I have nothing further for discussion except that improper protocol by the superintendent's office should not be accepted. And just as much as people's complained in the past about not having ample time, five hours into our regular meeting portal, because I'm not checking no other emails, that's not acceptable as well.
If I could just add one comment, and this is not to debate with any of the board members, but just to point out that under Robert's rules, the matter could be added tonight on a two-thirds vote without any distribution of the documents in advance. So what you got was an added courtesy of a hard copy. It certainly is not required under the rules of Robert's rules, at least. It may violate some protocol you have, but it wouldn't preclude the business from moving forward if the majority of the board, or two-thirds of the board, present voted to put it on the agenda.
Thank you, Attorney Anastasi. Any other question, or Mr. Salkalovic?
Yeah, Madam Chair, let's get back to the business of the children, the children who are waiting on this lease to make it approved. So I would like to make a motion to approve the second addendum to the lease agreement between Bridgeport Public Schools and St. Peter's Roman Catholic Church Corporation, subject to the amendments discussed by Attorney Anastasi.
I greatly appreciate the motion, but it probably would make more sense, Mr. Salkalovic, first make a motion to amend it in accordance with the discussion, and then a motion to approve as amended, two votes.
All right, I withdraw that motion, and I'll make a motion to amend paragraph three, termination to strike out within 90 days of July 1st.
No, actually, I'll.
And insert, take effect on July 1st. Did I capture it?
To be effective July 1st, yes, or to take effect is fine, certainly, absolutely, thank you.
Mr. Salkalovic has made the motion. Ms. Perez has seconded. Any abstentions?
We're in debate, Ms. Point of Order, we're in debate.
Debate, debate, I apologize. The maker of the motion? Oh, Salkalovic. Okay. Anybody else? No. Okay. Now comes the motion, is that?
You have to vote on the amendment. You have to call for vote, all in favor, if there's no further discussion.
There's no further discussion, all in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We have a no from.
Now you would entertain a motion to approve as amended.
I will entertain a motion to approve as amended. Ms. Perez made the motion. Mr. Salkalovic, I believe, is it, give it to, okay, Mr. Medina seconded.
Mr.
Now is there a discussion?
Your finance director is whispering in my ear, and he's accurate to the effect that I should have said to amend, to approve the lease as amended. So I think we all know we're talking about a lease, but he wants. To reflect it as amended, so thank you, Nestor.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna make the motion again. Oh.
Okay, so I'm gonna take back my motion. Take back your second. And I'm gonna make the motion to approve the lease as amended.
Moved by Ms. Perez, seconded by Mr. Medina. Now we're in debate. Maker of the motion? Mr. Medina? Debate, anybody, anyone? Okay. Who are we gonna vote? We're gonna take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstentions?
I'll abstain.
Abstention by Ms. Baptiste Perez. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Anastasi. The next item on the agenda is discussion and possible approval of issuing a joint RFP with city of Bridgeport for the Employee Assistance Program Services.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. This item before you is to sign your approval to issue a jointly RFP to solicit the Employee Assistance Program agency for the Bridgeport Public School employees and city employees. As you know, this is part of the benefit package that we offer all of our employees regarding their packages. The, in the past, we've issued, we've contracted jointly with the city, and the process was a little convoluted, and we learned after the fact. So we're coming before you so we can get ahead of it and have this RFP issued before it gets contracted.
Oh. Oh, okay, there is a motion on the floor by Mr. Traber to, are you? Thank you. Madam Secretary, I want you to repeat that, Mr. Traber, would you repeat that, please?
Reading, it's on the agenda, approval of issuing a joint RFP with the city of Bridgeport for the Employee Assistance Program Services.
Been moved by Mr. Traber. And seconded by Mr. Medina. Now on debate. The maker of the motion?
Nothing to say, Madam Chair.
Mr. Medina? Debate. Mr. Salkalovic.
Yeah, just for clarification and maybe for some knowledge of the incoming freshman's acting superintendent, and we haven't done this well. This is one of those contract, joint RFPs entered between us and the city, such as like the eyeglass, not the eyeglasses, the retirement and some.
But the medical benefits and so forth.
Yeah, thank you. And what's the split in the payment? Are we getting, is it properly apportioned between the city and the board? Has that been held, were you apportioned?
That's gonna be determined once we get the responses from the agencies. Before we go into contract, we'll have to negotiate that.
Right, because.
I have a question.
With the city.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Traber.
No, no, I realized I wasn't next, so I'll wait. Our point of clarification, I guess I wanna, this is Employee Assistance Program, isn't it?
That's correct.
So this is an eyeglass.
No, 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 it's similar to.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood Mr. Salkalovic's question then. This is a program where employees who need assistance.
In crisis.
Crisis counseling, right. Come to this, right, thank you. I misunderstood your question, sorry, Mr. Salkalovic. I wanted to be clear to everybody. And this was a problem in the past because we were presented this program too late. So you're getting ahead of the game. Like we asked the last time I recall, where it was presented to us as a done deal. You're now presenting it to us way in advance so that we'll know. Thank you.
You'll have a say in it, yes.
That's why, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Traber, anybody else? Nobody else? Okay. So now do we vote? All in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries?
I abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry, who abstains?
Tahiba Bain, I just, I don't really know what's going on, but so it doesn't matter, but I just wanted to say that.
Ms. Bain abstains. Still. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. The next item on the agenda is discussion and possible approval of the Critical Technology MDF/IDF HVAC Repairs/Remediation for identified as mission-critical for schools in the district. Who is going to speak to that? Mr. Paslowski. Podium, yeah.
Good evening, board, acting superintendent. What's up? Sorry. I'm here to speak on the proposed contracts, which is a contract that specifically addresses substantial critical needs that we have, which essentially impacts the everyday function of the buildings. And what we did was, is we went forward and we analyzed the absolute most critical places that needed to be addressed. This process goes back more than a year and a half and took a substantial amount of time. This was allocated within Esser. Excuse me. And we have gotten to the point where, after cutting it down and getting it to the most affordable possible amount, we, you know, put forward that contract. This is a state contract that has been amended using attorney's office to put in the language for Bridgeport Board of Education, City of Bridgeport, for invocation with the particular vendor. This vendor is the same vendor that did Harding High School and did, and is doing Basak High School, and is basically, you know, one of our primary enterprise partners for running the infrastructure. And I am here to entertain any questions or answer anything you have in regards to it.
I just wanna make this, like, really as clear as we can. So from what I understand, isn't this for the servers all around the entire district to have cooling air in the room where the server is so they don't basically blow up? Is that saying, not blow up, but I mean.
Perfect way to put it, absolutely.
Yeah, so this is not, this is like super necessary because especially in the buildings where there's no air conditioning, like, this is the computer system that needs to run in the building in order for everything to be effectively running. It needs some type of coolant. Like, you know, when I was in the hospital, and I was like, why is it so cold in here? And, you know, and they reminded me, Akisha, you know, we need to have the systems and the machines cool. So I just wanted to explain that just for somebody who may not understand, that's all.
You have put it infinitely better than I have, thank you. At the end of the day, yes, that's exactly right. We have servers and stuff like that that absolutely needs to be cooled, and this is the absolute mission-critical. And again, we tried to stay as close to budget within the allocated for Esser. Thank you for doing a better job than I did.
No problem.
Sorry, I'm not the best at that.
Oh, Mr. Salkalovic.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Paslowski. Yeah, I've been through the walkthroughs and a lot of these server. Sucking in and sucking out, and these servers are astronomically expensive. So it would behoove us to make this investment, and you did say this was the Esser dollars?
Yes, this was allocated in Esser, again, I can't speak to how Esser did it, but this was allocated. As a matter of fact.
Prior to the cutoff.
Oh, yeah, yeah. About a year and a half, we've been working on this.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay, did we make a motion? Does somebody wanna make a motion? Oh, Mr. Traber.
I move for the approval of the Critical Technology MDF/IDF HVAC Repairs/Remediation for identified as mission-critical for schools in the district.
Thank you.
And Mr. Benahan, second. Are we up for debate now? Am I got it right? Okay, debate.
As the maker, I have nothing to add.
All right. Okay. Mr. Medina, your mic? No. No debate. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much, everybody. Have a great evening.
The next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action on the 2025 regular board meeting schedule. Is anybody speaking on that, Dr. Avery, or?
I think it's.
Oh, sorry.
This is a yearly agenda item that the board has to approve a calendar for the next school year, and so it just, it was placed in the portal for your review.
I make a motion for the approval of action on the 2025 regular board meeting schedule.
It's been seconded by Mrs. Salkovic. Mr. Traver, you have your mic. That's all.
Yes, I have a question. This wouldn't have occurred to me had tonight not occurred. We have a regular Board of Ed meeting scheduled on a report card council, a report card night. How often does that happen? Do we, do we look at that? I know, I'm sure, I'm sure that we look at, you know, the calendar that we voted on already at the beginning of the year, and the school holidays, and all that other stuff to look for possible conflicts. But how often do we run into report card conferences?
I'm not a hundred percent sure on the occurrence of, of it aligning to a report card conference time, but we, we looked at a lot of different scenarios to making sure that we can reduce the conflicts that we, that we've, that we've had. So there, there, there may be one or two different anomalies that's going to be presented, and we'll kind of have to work, work around those things. If we, we may have the flexibility of moving that particular date, you know, since it's further out, you know, to make sure it doesn't conflict with, we want more families and communities to be at these meetings as well, so that will conflict getting more people here. So we can, we can adjust that if need be. I'll get someone to note that, and we may be able to, to make a change.
Which date was that, Mr. Traver, again?
I just wanted to follow along.
Oh, shoot. Okay, sorry.
I'm only asking because at least one person said, what, what knucklehead scheduled tonight's meeting on the report card night? Because I can't be there tonight to hear about the budget. And now granted, I, I bet most people don't care so much about attending if there wasn't the fact that this budget and the Qadi Bay issue were on the budget tonight, that they were all worried about getting here. So probably nine times out of 10, what's on the agenda doesn't concern them to the degree that it did tonight. But that's pretty much what a few people said to me in the last four or five days. And so it became more of an issue, and it, it never occurred to me, so.
I'll have staff, we'll.
Take a look. It'll probably never be an issue again, but in the next year, it might be.
Thank you, Mr. Traver. Mr. Benahan?
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. I know, I see the calendar, I see different days, and I don't want that we have that this issue this year about the day, the holiday, stuff like that. So do we, we're not going to be discussed, you know, like, like this year, holiday was a veteran day. I know they vote for the Harvard School and, you know, parents, and especially the veteran people complaining about why they have some, you know, we got classes, the school was open in Bridgeport, and other places was closed. And as I have a veteran family, you know, for me, that's a special day, you know, we have to respect that day. I know they have a vote last year for that, but I just wanted to be sure this year at least for 2025, we don't have no issue about holidays. So we know the dates, you know, we're not going to have issues.
That's going to come forward, I think, January, February, when we do the district calendar for, for the next year, that'll come before the board. We have a, a lot of discussion with, with staff and community regarding, you know, particular holidays that they're choosing to do. So we, we're going to get some input on that. We went through that exercise last year, and hopefully we'll be, we'll be able to do that again, to look at exactly how those holidays align in the, in the, in the master calendar for the district back in, in the new year, for sure.
Mr. Salkovic?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, in answer to Mr. Traver's question, I've sat through quite a few board meetings on parent-teacher conference nights, report card conference nights, and this, this schedule is being put out a year in advance. This first meeting is two months in advance. There are, to date, probably nothing scheduled for report conferences. It's not a matter in scheduling board meetings on report card conference nights, it's a matter of scheduling report card conference, board meeting nights, which we've got adequate notice to work around. A year in advance because they decided to go on vacation and, or something like that. And we've known about this on our schedule for the past year, so if we could work from this way instead of the other way, probably be better.
Yeah, we'll go through that exercise and making sure of that as well, so.
Mr. Traver?
Actually, we scheduled the, the school calendar before we scheduled this. And so that, we'll just have to take a look at it and see if we need to adjust it. I, I don't, it's not worth prolonging, but given what we know, the budget that we're going to have to deal with this spring, and how controversial it will be, given the cuts that we're going to have to be making, we want to just take a forward look at that in case it's going to present conflict to try and deal with it, because it's going to be a big subject in the spring for the spring report card conferences. That's it. I'm willing, I'm ready to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Traver. Mr. Benahan?
Yes, just to reclarify, because I see the calendar, and say, April 28, 2025, we're going to have only one meeting board education. April 28 is 2025, that's a Monday, so what happened the first week, it's free. I'm just looking at the calendar just now. And I see June 9, we have one. I know the graduation is almost about the second week, something like that. So I'm confused about that, so I want to be sure, you know, we got the calendars, especially April, you see, April 28, 2025, Monday, we have only one meeting.
Because it's spring.
Spring break. Spring break.
Yeah, spring break on the 14th.
What is, what is the, the dates? What, what day is a spring break?
14th.
14th to 18th, something like that. I'll release it to 14th and 18th, but so what's going on with the, the week, the seven to the, you know, let's say the seven. I'm just saying. We don't want surprise later.
I have a spring break.
And that, what you have?
14th through the 18th.
14th through the 18th.
Good Friday is the 18th. 14th to the 17th, 14th to the 17th is spring recess, and then you have, Good Friday is on the 18th of April.
Okay.
So that whole week is, that week.
Yeah, the whole week.
Yeah, no, but I'm talking the April, let's say the April from 2025, from the seventh, let's say the seven, we can have a board education meeting?
Yeah, thanks to the council, yeah, because, yeah. In, in June, it's because the school ends on, in June, there's only one, one opportunity in June. But I think in April, the, the week before, the city council meets, and then we're off the following week for spring recess, and then we come back again on the 14th, which that's the only opportunity we have in April. So that's why there's one in April. The weeks, the months are smaller or something there, and with that spring recess in there as well, it doesn't give you the opportunity to.
Right, right, thank you, that's very clear, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Benahan. Mr. Woodson?
Just want to say that we spent more time talking about spring vacations and everything else, and not one mention about student outcomes.
Thank you, Mr. All right, thank you, Mr. Woodson. Where were we? We were, the meeting schedule. Anybody want to make a motion on that? We did, okay, and we seconded? Okay, and we were in debate just now, right? Okay. Vote. We will take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All, any oppose? Any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. The last item on the agenda is discussion and possible approval of the Bridgeport Public Schools fiscal year 2425 potential budget gap closing measures. Dr. Avery?
Madam Chair, members of the board, I, I was given this opportunity to become the Acting Superintendent November, I think, 12th or, yeah, November, when was that? I think it was November 12th. November 12th. That has been 13, 13 days in, in the position. And within that 13 days, I have had an opportunity to kind of look in. And at the moment, I would like to propose that we, we table this item in order for us to give a little bit more time to, for us to kind of get our ducks in a row, to be able to present this board with an adequate, you know, proposal of where we feel we need to be and what we need to do, next steps. And so it's, it's crucial, as we pull the onion back, there's more and more that's, that we're facing that I have no real clear, you know, direction to be able to provide the board tonight. And so I'm, I'm asking for this item to be tabled in order for us to have a little bit more opportunities to dig deeper, provide a clear pathway for this district to move, and so.
There's a motion to table this item till the next meeting. I have a second from Mrs. Salkovic. Oh, thank you, because I was about to ask. Okay, it's been seconded. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So by Mr. Benahan, seconded by Mr. Medina. Anybody, everybody, anybody say aye? Any oppose to that? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you so much, everybody. Have a good night. It is 8:57 PM.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll talk sometime, hopefully next week, I think I'll be, I hurt my back this week.
Oh, you hurt your back.
Okay.